Well, happy Tuesday, everyone. I'm MJ Bolt, your host of Unbolted. And with us today, we have the Laura Patton. Laura, thanks so much for being with us today.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm happy to be here.
You betcha. So Laura is currently on the Spokane Valley City Council, and she's running again for the same position. So we wanted to have you on as you are one, the GOP Spokane County GOP recommended candidate for this race. And to give everybody a chance that doesn't know you yet, a little opportunity to hear about you and why you're running again. So Laura, let's get into, let's talk about a little bit of your background and your history. Like, how did you get into this position of being on the city council?
Well, it's a long journey and somewhat unexpected. So I mean, I've been involved in politics for a long, long time, but always on the other side of it. I'm not the elected. I'm the one supporting them, going out and, and doing those kinds of things, putting up signs and doorbelling and writing letters to the editor and that kind of stuff. So I've done that not only for my husband for many years, but also for other candidates, Republican candidates. I have been asked many times to run for the city council and always kind of turned them down because I had other stuff going on. And, and I finally decided that it was time. And the kids are all grown up and gone. Nobody lives in the, well, even in the state of Washington, for heaven's sakes. We drove them out. I don't know what the deal is. But, and so I decided to jump in. And it is a leap of faith because it's very different on this side. You're, now you're the one standing up and saying, this is what I believe, and this is how I plan to vote. And you are accountable, you know, me, the individual is accountable for what we do and say. And people either support or some attack, you know, so it's, it's, you're out there in the public. And it's, it's, it's a very different feeling. But I had good, a good four years on the council so far, learned a lot, accomplished some really good things, I think. I think the city's in a really good place. But there's more to be done. And I still have the energy to do it. So I decided to run for reelection. And here I am.
Nice. Yeah. So your first term was, was it 2021? That was the start of your first term? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So you've served one term. And if, if y'all don't know, Laura's infamous, famous, well-respected spouse is Senator Patton that has served, elected for, what, 30 years, Laura?
He was 28, and in between he was a district court judge. And he's done all kinds of things. And he's, you know, he decided to retire from the legislature, but he's, he's still working part-time for Congressman Baumgartner. So that was another reason why it's like, oh, okay, well, we're still active and both of us doing stuff. So another reason that was, it was okay to run for reelection.
He's not really retired, basically. Yeah, exactly. So yeah, you, you, even though it wasn't you that was the elected, you were supporting and, and walking that life with somebody for 30 years. So, and I know you've been awesome on the Spokane Valley City Council. So we're thrilled that you're running again for this position. Yeah. What is your vision for the city of Spokane Valley, Laura?
Well, you know, I grew up here, and there's been huge changes in the valley in the years that I've been here. And some good, some bad, you know, we all have this feeling like we want it to stay the same. But the thing is, and the truth is, is that it doesn't, and it never will. And it's one of the fastest growing areas in the state. And so what I see as a vision is to manage that growth in a way that creates a viable and, and prosperous city, and doesn't destroy the kind of character that we have here, or the values that we have here. So we enjoy more space than a lot of people do in their living situations, you know, and the West Side wants us to all grow up in this, you know, vertical situation where we're on top of each other, and, and they don't want to have any spaces between homes. And, you know, that's not what the valley is. And I don't want it to become that. And frankly, I've, I've been to other cities and other countries where people are jammed in, and it's not a good thing. I mean, people need their space. And so I, I want to help manage that growth to maintain the, the kind of the character and the feeling of, you know, green spaces and, and private spaces, and not one on top of each other. But we need to grow, and we need to have, bring businesses and jobs into the area so that the city can flourish. If you're not doing that, you're going to stay mate, and you're going to die because the cost of operating, the cost of living, the cost of everything keeps going up. And if you're not bringing other people in to be paying taxes and to be buying homes and property and developing businesses and jobs, then your city's going to die. And I don't want that to happen either. So we need to manage things in, in a responsible way. That benefits the most people, hopefully everybody, you know, we want to benefit everybody, but.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. And I, I've known you to be pretty fiscally conservative as well, and very thoughtful about no, you know, extra taxes on the citizens. But I think that's been true with your votes.
Oh, yeah. And I've, you know, there's been lots of opportunities to raise taxes on the city, you know, the city council could, and I've voted against all of them, even though my opponent claims otherwise. But every year, the vote comes up to add the 110 to 1% to the property tax. And the Spokane Valley has only done that once in our whole 23-year history, and that was in 2007 or 2008, or something like that. And we aren't going to be doing it again this year, you know, so the property taxes, everybody cries, we get the, we get the fault. Everybody blames us for rising property taxes, and we have not raised them at all. And frankly, the, the things that raise them are things people vote for. It's the school levies and the fire levies. And, you know, they take up probably, between the fire and the schools, I think it's over 50% of the property taxes. We get 8.9%, you know, and that's how it's been for years. So we aren't raising property taxes. I never voted to do that. I voted against the license tab tax. You know, I voted against the formation of the Transportation Benefit District because that's a taxing authority, and that's, they formed it just to raise the tax. And I voted against that as well. So I'm, yeah, I'm not going to be raising taxes. How you build a vibrant city is to bring in businesses and jobs and tourism, bring people in who will be in your hotels, buying things in your stores and restaurants, going to the movies, doing all this kind of stuff. And that tax revenue builds our, you know, our, well, it's a strong revenue stream. It's our strongest revenue stream. And the nice thing about sales tax is, they tell me, 48% of the amount comes from people outside the city.
Right.
Reduces the tax burden of us who live in the city.
Yeah, that's so important. And, you know, so yes, you, you want to make this attractive for people to bring their businesses here, you know, come and live here. And so you have to kind of find that delicate little sweet spot of keeping it attractive for others, but also maintaining what the people in the, in the community want, right? And not growing so fast and so crazily that nobody wants to be here, right?
Right, right.
And we can see too, you know, where we keep this attractive, unlike what's happening, I think, in Spokane, downtown Spokane, where people are moving out. You know, we want people to move their businesses here in the valley. So I appreciate, you know, you doing that delicate dance and continuing to listen to people on how best to do this as we continue to move along.
Thank you.
Yeah. So Laura, why do people should vote for you over your other opponent in this race?
Well, for one thing, my other, my opponent has kind of a problem with accountability and with being accurate on what he says. For one thing, he's accused me of raising taxes or consistently voting for tax increases, which is not true. He's also accused me of defunding the police, if you can believe it. Common sense says if you're raising the amount of money spent on police, policing in the city, which we've done in the last five years, has gone up $13 million. You are not defunding the police. We've, we've filled all the vacant positions, and we've hired 10 new ones. That is not defunding police. That is building a sustainable and a, and a well-trained police force. And, you know, where he gets that, it's like, I mean, just look at the numbers. It's, it's crazy. And then he and his and the other one in the race, running against Pam Haley, went down Sprague, and they went to 17 businesses. And they told them that the city was going to dig up Sprague around their businesses and destroy access to their business. It would, there wouldn't be any access, and it would impact, you know, their sales. And it was going to start in September or very soon. Well, the truth is, well, and we found that out because the businesses are upset, right? And they're calling City Hall, and they're calling the Valley Chamber and saying, what the heck is this? And so it took five city employees, five hours to go up and down, because we didn't know all the businesses they hit, right? Up and down Sprague to set the record straight. And, and the record is, number one, they went to the wrong businesses. There is a pavement preservation project on Sprague. But they went to businesses that were outside of the boundaries of that project, and told them we were going to dig up the street and destroy access to their businesses. So wrong businesses, then wrong impact of the project. It is a pavement preserve, a grind and overlay, right? So you're not digging up the street, number one. And even when, even if it hasn't been resurfaced, it's still drivable, right? And the city had already committed to, well, and, you know, it's just, you don't dig it up, there's access. But the city had committed that if that access would be available to all the businesses during the business hours. If there was to be a closure, and they didn't anticipate any, it would be at night after hours. And that was, that was announced in the council meetings. And they were there because they come every week, and they heard it. And, you know, so wrong businesses, wrong impact, and wrong timing, because the project is due next spring. And of course, the city's not sending out a notice and saying, in September, saying, oh, we're going to have a project. In the spring, we don't know the dates. You know, you don't do that. You wait until you're closer, and you know the dates, and you can, so anyway, that was the case. And, and kind of the irony, it kind of shows you who's, who's kind of running the show, because Councilmember Merkel, the next, very next meeting said, oh, I have a question about the Sprague Preservation Project. When is that supposed to start? I thought it was supposed to start, you know, this month. And it's like, no. And we told, you know, and that was announced in the council as well. It was delayed because of the strike of the pavers, the asphalt pavers. So, I mean, it's just, so that's one reason. And another reason is the experience I've had and the background that I have, that will help, that helped me understand what's going on, and the necessities of certain procedures, the budgeting, everything else. So, you know, I just think my background is a more robust background, and my experience is more robust. And, and my values, I mean, you have to be transparent, and you have to be accurate, you know, you have to have credibility. You know, how can my opponent have any credibility after this, you know? Well, after all of it, I mean, the inaccuracies of his accusations, and then things like this road, this road debacle, we're going to go under the wrong businesses. I mean, so they, they, he upset businesses.
Yeah.
You know, you're, you're harming relationships instead of building relationships. And it's always attack, attack, attack. And it's, it's never like, how can we build things? How can we do this right? How can we make Spokane Valley a better place?
Right. Well, that's one thing I know about you so well, you know, as I've gotten to know you over the last few years, is you're a very trusted, reliable source. You know, what you say is truth, what you say you do. And that is huge with an elected official. I mean, we can't have people going around like fear mongering, and telling people stuff that isn't true. I mean, what a, what a chaos. So I definitely know that about you, to be very trusted and reliable, and a person of integrity. And that, that is, you know, hugely valuable when we're talking about who we need as our elected.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry, and sorry if there's a little feedback. I don't know if it's coming through on your end too, but we'll get through it here. Any other top priorities that you have, Laura, for the Spokane Valley City?
Well, economic development is, I kind of touched on it, but that's really a top priority. And we've had some huge successes recently. And actually, the, the valley, things are really happening in the valley. We have a momentum going. We had the Pines Road Grade Separation Groundbreaking the other day, and Congressman Baumgartner was there. And as we were telling him everything that's going on in the valley, he said, wow, this is a place to be, you know? So we have the Road Grade Separation at Pines, which is a huge project, and will be a fantastic addition when it's completed in terms of safety, and in terms of moving materials and goods and products and people. I mean, there's over four hours of waiting at those tracks every day, because those tracks are like the only, it's the hub. It's the way everybody gets into the inland Northwest. And so this, this is great. And we have a great partnership with Burlington Northern. It's also going to have a new trailhead on the Centennial Trail just north of Trent. It'll be really nice. And buses can, there'll be room for buses even to come and turn and that kind of stuff. So that's awesome. We've had the Dave and Buster's big opening. I don't know if you're into Dave and Buster's, but that, and they're still, I mean, they're going strong, and they, they are performing higher than their projected performance. So that's, that's pretty awesome.
My son actually works there, Laura. I guess, you know, we haven't talked, but Preston got a job there. He's been there since they've opened. And so he loves working there, but I didn't know that about their revenues. That's great. It's always busy, almost every single day and evening.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's awesome. The Cross Course is opening this fall. And of course, our opponents have all been criticizing us on the cross course. And it's going to be a spectacular success. So we have two events this fall. It's going to be the NWAAC, which is the Community Colleges Championship, and the WCC Championships in November, November 1st and November 10th. The hotels are filling up. Next year's going to be a full slate. I think they've got like, I forget, it's either 15 or 25 already signed up. And people are, the hotels are seeing people reserved for next year. So it's, it's going to be huge. And that's bringing people in again to spend their money in our city and benefit all of us.
And that's the cross country, the new cross-country track or area, right? Where is that again?
Off of Flora. And it's, it's on the river. So there's a lot of trees because they're state land between us and the river. So there's a lot of trees, but in certain places, you can see the river down there.
Yep.
You know, and so it's very close. It's a beautiful venue. It's all turf, which is unusual. It's like the nicest premier cross-country course west of the Mississippi. They, I, I'm not into cross-country, so I didn't realize all this until we got into it. But the interest across the country is huge. And the coaches are so excited. And, you know, we have people lined up wanting to use it. So it's a great deal. But the other thing is, this is going to be open to our public and our kids from, you know, middle school, high school, anybody, and then, you know, for the, for their teams as well. And then for people just to come in and, and like a park, right? It's not going to be used 24/7. And so they can, it's a nice, beautiful park, and they can run the course, and they can, you know, be there in the green spaces. And so it's, it's a beautiful venue. And then we have, you know, this benefactor who is willing to put in tens of millions of dollars as a gift to the city to build ice rink with two sheets, two sheets of ice. And again, this is a huge, huge benefit. I mean, it's a gift. It's like, how, how often does this happen for, for a city or municipality? I mean, it's, you can go 100 years and never have anything like that. Well, you could go the whole life of the city and never have anything like this. But he made, he grew up here, made a lot of his money here, he made it other places as well, and he wants to give back. And, and what a gift, and what a tribute that he would do this. And again, that is going to be open for our kids and our grandkids. And they're going to provide like low cost or no cost skating lessons and, you know, all kinds of stuff. The schools are excited. The, the hockey teams are excited. Yeah, the Chiefs are going to be using it as a practice rink. And, you know, and I, I've heard for years that, you know, kids in the hockey had to be, had practice times at like midnight or 2:00 in the morning, or this kind of stuff up at Eagles. And so it's not like we're taking business away from anybody else. It's, it's needed, and it's necessary. And even as far as Cordill Lane, they're excited to come over because they're going to Eastern.
Wow.
Yeah. So, I mean, there's a super need. So that's another thing that we're doing. There's a couple of things on tap that haven't opened yet that are coming. And so, you know, we're grown, and that's what, that's what we want. We want to bring in this economic development to make our lives a little easier and not have the tax burden that we would if we didn't have them. So the other thing that I'm really concerned about is housing.
Yeah.
And it's always a, you know, it's been an issue for many years. But as we grow, what we've seen is a lot of people living in Idaho, because it's cheaper, they can buy a house in Idaho, like for, I don't know, the same house for like $40,000 cheaper than they can buy it here.
Is that because of all the regulations that we have and the, yeah, permitting and everything, right?
Yep, yep. So what we see is a lot of our workers living in Idaho and commuting into the valley or Spokane. And, you know, so we're losing, they live over there, they shop over there. They pay taxes over there, but they work here. So they, they come every day, and they're, you know, I-90 gets clogged, as if you've ever been on it, you know, in the morning or in the evening. It's just crazy. And it would be really nice to be able to have people who work here also live here. And so I'm looking for options for housing that's affordable. Of course, the state makes it extremely difficult to do that. But if you're, but if you're looking at like condos or townhouses or cottages, or, you know, whatever else, we're looking at all, we want multiple options, you know, for, for home ownership, because that's where you get the stability. That's where people are, have skin in the game because they're living in the community, and they, and they're shopping in the community, and they're out in the community all the time. And so they want it to be a nice place to live, and have parks and good schools and all that kind of stuff. So, yeah, housing is a challenge. And the state is making it more of a challenge every day because they want to impose their values, their West Side values on the whole state. They, like a one-size-fits-all, which is just ridiculous. And, but, but you can hear them on the, on the talk shows and stuff, if you live and listen to TVW or, or, yeah. And they'll just say, oh, you know, Eastern Washington, you know, we have to, you know, we have to change that. They're just out of sync, and they need to have more density, and, you know, all this kind of stuff. And, you know, so we've been pushing on the growth management as well, and told the county, we want to grow. And we want boundaries changed, push them out so that we can build or swap, because there's, there's buildable land that is out of bounds, basically. And we have non-buildable land that we can't really use, so swap it, you know, that, that kind of thing. So there's a number of things we can do, and we try to do around the state mandates and, you know, interference in our way of life. But it's a challenge.
Yeah. Well, housing continues to be such a challenge. And, you know, our, our youth that are growing up and being young adults, you know, just hardly have a chance to even start in, you know, like what we were able to do, Laura, right? When we were young, it's, it's a completely different ballgame now. I don't even know what the median house price is, but it's, it's outrageous. Yeah, yeah.
Home ownership is your first, often your first step into, you know, building wealth as you, as you buy and, and get equity into your home. And then you can use that to leverage more wealth. And, you know, that's not, and that's, that's how it's been for many years. And, you know, a lot of our young people have been denied that opportunity.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate your attention to, you know, those details and trying to figure out solutions, because that definitely is going to be an ongoing challenge for us here in Spokane Valley, Eastern Washington. And, you know, like you said, trying to attract people that work here to stay here and live here. Yeah, I remember hearing the, the amount of cars and the traffic coming from Idaho now, you know? And like you said, if you've been on I-90 at all, you, you know, you see it, you feel it, because you get stuck in traffic as they're leaving town, you know, headed back to Idaho after working. So.
Yep.
Challenging times, for sure. Laura, how do you plan to connect, to continue to connect with the community once elected again? I know you guys have on the city council the opportunity for citizens to come and talk. And it sounds like that's, you know, probably not as engaged, or people don't engage in that as, as much as what y'all would like, as least that's whatever from other city council members. How, how do you continue to make sure you're hearing from citizens?
Yeah, there's a number of ways. And like you say, we do have the public comment every, every council meeting. And there's, there's two general public comment sections, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end of the meeting, which we change because we heard it from people that, you know, sometimes they want to hear what's going on, and then they can comment on it. So we did that. Plus, on action items, there's also public comment available on those action items. But the comments have to be specific to that particular item. So that's during the council meetings. We also, once a month, have Community Connections, which is an hour, well, 45 minutes, I guess, long, open, kind of open house sort of format in the lobby of City Hall. And that is before the council meeting that night. So oftentimes, they'll have a theme. They don't, you know, they don't have to, but sometimes they have a theme, and then they'll have white boards up there, or information posted on various topics and whatever the theme is, you know, once it was, you know, solid waste collection. So they had, you know, and Waste Management came with their big truck, and Sunshine came with their truck, and they talked about what they did and recycling and all that kind of stuff. And people can ask questions, and the council members are all there. And so it's, I mean, there, there might be a theme or a topic, but it's basically, you know, open to whatever.
A set time every month, or set date, I guess?
Yeah. So like tonight, I mean, yeah, tonight's Tuesday is the monthly Community Connections. So that will be at 5 o'clock.
Like the second Tuesday of the month, or third Tuesday of the month? Is it, is it set like that, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah, so that's, so that's one big thing. And, and there's been, depending, you know, on the day and what's happening elsewhere in the city, or sometimes we have big crowds, and sometimes not quite so many. But, but that's really a nice kind of informal, you know, setting, non-confrontational. We, we have cookies and, you know, something to drink. So that's a really good way to, to connect. Always there's, you know, my city phone, there's my city email. People also call, you know, my personal phone if they know it, or, or have found it, or I give it to them. Always open for conversations or meetings, you know, having a meeting next week with some constituents. I've had many meetings, you know, contact us. We're always open to, to listen and to meet and to find out what they want. We go to ribbon cuttings, we go to various, you know, where there's groups of people and business people. You know, for the business community, I'm on the Valley Chamber Board. So they know how to connect with me there. And at the various events that the chamber has, I try to get out and go to various other events, not just ribbon Uh, not just ribbon cuttings, but like the Manufacturing Matters, you know, is a, is a meeting where these kids, you know, it's, it's amazing. Well, actually that wasn't Manufacturing Matters. That was, so there's entrepreneurship where the kids come and they have their little businesses and they set them all up at Center Place and they uh, sell, you know, what they have or tell you what they're doing. It was awesome. I went and I talked to every single one of the kids there. They had some amazing stuff going on. And so, and of course their parents are there, you know, and so that was really fun. So those kinds of activities, um, yeah, but just call or, or email and if you want to meet, if you want to talk on the phone, however you want to do it.
Yeah.
We're open.
That's awesome. Uh, Laura, do you want to share with everybody how they can get in touch with you, what your email is and maybe what your website is too?
Yeah. So, so my city email uh, is L Patton at SpokaneValleyLaw.org or no, law.gov. Uh, my city phone is uh, 533696. I never call it.
I don't blame you.
986. Yeah.
You want to say, do you, do you want to go share that again?
It's uh, 533, uh, not 533. See, I don't even know it. I don't even call it. Um, well, this is my personal phone. That doesn't work.
We can post it later too, Laura. Let me know. I'll, I'll post it on here. And then, um, yeah. And what about your website? If people want to go find out more about you?
Oh, um, PattonforCouncil@gmail.com.
Yep. And PattonforCouncil.com as well as your website for your campaign. Yep. So you can reach out to Laura through that. That would probably be the best way um, to get to her directly as well. Any final comments? Anything else that you want people to make sure that they know about you? Our voters to know about you before they vote this, this uh, election cycle?
Um, well, I, yeah, not so much about me. I, I did want to tell them about one thing that I think the voters really know and has been kind of flying under the radar. And that is um, a, a money grab by the city of Spokane on utility taxes. And so it's all uh, it's all around the county's wastewater management plant, which uh, unfortunately is within, built within the city Spokane boundaries. But there were, there were agreements in place that this money grab wouldn't happen. So the facility is owned by the county, built by the county, operated by the county, maintained by the county. Spokane has nothing to do with it, other than they let the county build it on a piece of their land. And so the agreements were that Spokane isn't entitled to utility taxes off of this thing. They do nothing. You know, with, with wastewater treatment coming from the county and from the valley. Uh, so they sent a letter and they're demanding $58 million from the, from the county and the valley in uh, back unpaid supposedly utility taxes, penalties and um, late fees.
Whoa. So wait, so, so, because you're saying the county and, and then the city. So let me make sure I get this straight. Is it, is it the city of Spokane or is it the county?
It's, well, it, the city of Spokane is demanding the tax, the utility tax on a facility owned and operated by the county that resides within the boundary of the city. But there were, when it was designed and built and opened, there were agreements in place that Spokane didn't have any right to, you know, to the utility tax, to tax the utilities because they, they're not operating it. They're not maintaining it. They're not, you know, doing anything. They didn't build it. They don't own it. And so Spokane is now violating those agreements and demanding the money. And I want people to be aware of it because there was one article, but it's sort of flying under the radar. People don't realize that is, wow, our ratepayers would pay that on top of what they pay, you know, the county for processing the wastewater. I mean, and that's it, you know?
So the county, the county owns it, the county operates it, but the city is trying to tax um, surrounding cities or just Spokane Valley?
Oh, so yeah, the county, the unincorporated county, uh, Spokane Valley. I think Millwood is, is part of it. I'm not sure exactly how far it goes. But, you know, because we were mostly concerned about, you know, the impact on us. Um, so we are fighting it. You know, um, and the attorneys are talking, but you know, basically it's a money grab by Spokane because there are millions of dollars in debt.
Yeah.
And they've taxed, they've taxed their people to death.
Run them off because of bad policies.
And so, yeah. And so now they're reaching out to try to tax others. And, you know, we're not going to stand for it. This is outrageous. So.
So do you have any idea of kind of what the plan of action is going to be? Is, do you think there'll be a lawsuit? What, what are you foreseeing?
Yeah, because it, they've, they've tried it before. They've talked about it before. So their attorneys have been, you know, um, hired prior to this. They went to the legislature. They, they were going to go to the legislature. That got killed, uh, thank goodness. Uh, but that's what you know, Mayor Brown does. She goes to the, her friends in the legislature, which is what she did with Shrek and uh, various other things. But anyway, and um, so yeah, the attorneys are standing by. And, but we're, we're in negotiations. Our lawyers are in, and the county's lawyers are negotiating with the city, but that kind of blew up recently. And, you know, that, it's like, yeah.
That's crazy. And you said, was it, did you say 58 million for Spokane Valley?
Well, not 58 million for the county and the, so, but we would be uh, like 40, I don't, I don't know, 40 some percent of that. So we would be a huge chunk of that. That would be an additional cost on our, you know, our citizens.
Yeah.
You know, and, and my goodness, it's just crazy. And as the state auditor had ruled a number of years ago that um, you know, that no, they didn't, the, the Spokane didn't, you know, have, shouldn't have access to that or shouldn't be able to tax. And so they're going against that decision as well.
Well, it sounds like you're, I, I mean, you already get taxed for it, you know, through the county, right? I'm, I'm assuming.
And you're paying for it through the county.
So, so they're going to try to impose a double tax on this. This is crazy.
It is, you know, but that's some of the stuff that's going on. It's just, you know, it's what Spokane's done to Shrek and demanding more money from that system. And then, and then, you know, separate, well, trying to separate, I guess. I mean, Shrek basically kicked them out because they, um, you know, they couldn't come to an agreement, but.
Yeah, I don't know about this. What is Shrek?
Oh, Shrek is the emergency, um, uh, you know, the Spokane Region Emergency Communications.
Okay.
911 and Crime Check, right?
Oh, interesting.
They wanted more, uh, well, they wanted to control the board and they wanted more of the money. And the board said no. And so they finally, I mean, they, they went to mediation. The mediation was a failure because there was no mediating with them. And uh, so now Spokane is putting up their own um, communication system, but it's not going to be ready. It's supposed to be done by January. So they still want, you know, to use the, the, the existing regional one and they want more money. And, you know, they want it based on, on the number of calls rather than on population. Well, Spokane has more calls than anybody else because of their policies, right? So they have a lot of crime down there. Nobody wants to go downtown. And we're saying, well, change your policies, you know? It should be based on, on the population so that it's, you know, that way. But the cost is spread that way. But anyway, it's just, it's just crazy.
Wow. So we have the Shrek uh, incident, you know, this, this thing that they've tried to impose and change. And uh, and now they're doing this with the wastewater treatment that Spokane, the city of Spokane is trying to impose these fees and taxes upon the people, basically trying to double tax them. I mean, this, we might need to do a segment, Laura, once a month or something about all the crazy things that Spokane, the city of Spokane is doing. So people are aware. I mean, I wasn't aware of these things.
Yeah. And then, you know, we did cooperate with them um, on the homeless, regional homeless plan. We met, you know, with everybody else. And then Spokane blew that up and they stomped off because they wanted more control and to do it their own way. And so, I mean, now the, now on the task force for the um, uh, criminal justice reform or the Prop One or whatever they want to call it, the jail and, you know, behavioral changes. Um, they want us to participate and we're sitting there going like, well, you want us to be a partner with someone who's not a reliable partner?
Yeah. It, it sounds more like they want to be authoritarian. They don't really want to be a partner. It sounds like they want, they want your money and your resources, but they want to tell you how they want to do it.
Yes, exactly. So.
Doesn't make for a very good partnership.
It does not. But I want people to know that as a council, we are very concerned about this. We are standing up for our people in the valley and uh, fighting back. And we, we fight back against, you know, those kinds of unreasonable uh, actions by Spokane. And we fight back at the, at the state level. Uh, you know, we lobby and we um, we um, oh, we go and testify during session. We meet with our legislators periodically. They know where we're coming from. And so we are an advocate for our area. And we try to be very strong advocate, but it's, it's an uphill battle in this state.
Yeah. Yeah. And especially right now with the leadership in the city of Spokane. Um, you know, these, these bad policy decisions, you're, you're having to combat that all the time as well.
Yeah.
The impacts of that. Yeah, for sure. Well, Laura, we sure appreciate, you know, you serving in this capacity, you serving as the city councilwoman for the last four years. And we're trusting that you're going to win this election and continue to serve. We know it's a labor of love. I know it's a labor of love. We've had many conversations. And I appreciate your thoughtfulness and always willing to, to listen and um, you know, get to the bottom of it. And we, you know, we had and some pretty big discussions about, you know, some of the planning and development, uh, some projects around here the last probably year, you know, and you looked into that. And I really appreciated that. So um, yes, I'm, I'm very thankful for you and thankful for your service because it's not, it's not like you're, you're, you know, getting major bucks for doing this.
I am not, but it's, it's a beautiful city and the, and great people filled with great people. And so we want it to be a wonderful place for um, for our people to live and, and for me to live and raise kids and grandkids. And yeah.
Yeah.
So we, we're fighting hard.
Yes, for sure. Well, thank you again. And thank you for taking time today uh, to come on here and, and share with people, you know, about yourself and about your campaign. And we just, we need everybody to vote. You probably should have your ballots by now. Get it filled out. Get it, you know, if you don't know, obviously you want to vote for Laura uh, for the Spokane Valley City Council. So if you don't know about the other positions or how you should vote, you could go to SpokaneGOP.com where we vetted the candidates that, the races that people, you know, applied for. And um, if you need, there's some, there's some out there, some positions that we uh, didn't, weren't able to vet, but that will give you a very good indication of who it is the best. So do that. Go to SpokaneGOP.com, get your ballot in and, and talk to 10, 10 of your friends, you know? Uh, this tends to be a lower turnout uh, election. And I'm hoping that we're going to change things because these city council races impact us probably bigger than the, you know, larger gubernatorial or, or presidential candidates that we had last year. So you got to get out and vote. And, and again, vote for Laura. Thank you, Laura, for taking time with us today.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Appreciate it.
You bet. Blessings. Take care.